All right, I'll call this July 8th, 2024 meeting of the Planning Commission to order. First item is the approval of the agenda. Does anybody have any comments, suggestions, changes? If not, is there a motion?
I'll make a motion to approve.
Second?
All those in favor? All right, next item is the adoption of the minutes from the June 10th meeting.
Chair? Yeah, I'd like to amend the minutes. This is concerning item one of new business. Where in the meeting, Mr. Segura and I had brought up that we were, we had concerns about the left outs and left ins for both the 49 and 274 intersections. And just the left turns, that we had concerns about that. We just wanted to make sure that was on the record.
Okay.
That's the only change I have.
All right, does anybody have anything else they'd like to add? If not, is there a motion to accept the minutes with the, with the modification from Mr. Bog?
I make a, oh, I make a move to approve the minutes with the recommended amend amendment.
Okay, is there a second?
A second.
All right, all those in favor approving? All right, first item on the agenda is a public hearing. Chaplain Spencer has filed for a waiver from the York County Land Development Code to allow for a parcel to be subdivided utilizing an easement width less than the required 25 feet. The subject property is a 42.71 acre parcel located in the AGC District, Council District One, Mr. Ardet, case number W 24 dash 02. Rick?
Thank you. This is a public hearing for the waiver request W 2402. We call it Whitetail Manor. We remember this from a couple of months ago where we talked about a requirement for a 25 foot wide access easement for newly created lots. The waiver summary is we have a 42 acre parcel. The applicant wishes to create two lots using a current 18 foot access easement. The existing parcel has no access to a county or state maintained road except through this easement. The applicant has been unsuccessful in attempts to gain an additional width to create a 25 foot easement. And it is, easement documents, it does limit the use of this easement to support two and/or houses or lots. So that, that's what the max use will get out of this. Here's your vicinity map. There's a lot there off Baxter Village too. Here's the plat that was, they wanted to make it. It shows you the way in. I have a little cover. There's a little detail there of, of the easement. And here's a close up of the 18 foot easement coming off of Gardenia Street leading to the applicant's property. Went up there and took a picture. This is what the easement looks like right now as it's developed. We have a couple of findings we need to make to be able to grant a waiver code. And he needs to show that provisions of these would not cause regulations but causing unnecessary hazard, unnecessary hardship because of topographical or other conditions peculiar to the site. Again, it's 42 acres, landlocked without a frontage adjacent to state or county maintained road. An 18 foot easement is existing was adequate at time of dedication. While the applicant can develop two dwellings as it's presently configured, ownership of the dwellings would be unnecessarily constrained without the ability to create two separate lots. We find, find this proposal's waiver meets the criteria of allowing the ownership of two different people for the houses. The second, the Planning Commission finds that the departure may be made without defeating the intent provisions of the chapter. And allowing this ask, access in support of two dwellings on the two lots would not defeat the intent of the chapter. Access for two dwellings is currently provided. Providing for the individual lots has no additional impact and it's right there. So we find that it would meet the criteria. The staff finds the proposal, the waiver meets the request, both criteria for approval and recommends approval of the waiver to allow the utilization of an 18 foot wide access easement for the purposes of subdividing the subject site into two.
Okay, does anybody have any questions for Rick?
Refresh my memory, but we saw this before in another forum, didn't we?
This was, yes, this was an administrative appeal. The, the appeal was, it was appealing a staff decision where they did not recommend approval of the subdivision plat because of this easement.
Okay.
This was actually the recommended route to guide.
And real quick, the, it says two parcels, right? And does that mean forevermore two parcels?
Yeah, the agreement with the access easement would only allow two parcels. The access easement could be terminated if they had any more parcels or any more dwellings, for that matter.
Okay. Thank you. Just clarifying, I thought that was.
Anyone else? If not, the applicant can come up and.
Good evening, I'm Chaplain Spencer. Here again, I'm an attorney in Rock Hill representing the property owner, New Old. This is a pretty simple case. You've got a property owner that wants to subdivide 42 acres into two lots. This is in one of the most intensely single family residential areas in the county for zoning. It's next to the Baxter community. But here, they're just requesting two lots. And there's confusion on that. But if you look in the, the agreement, and that is in the packet at page 20, the agreement, which is the access agreement, is from Clear Springs. It's from 2009. At the time, there was not a width requirement in the county code. It's 18 feet. 18 feet is 18 feet. The other important part is paragraph eight of that agreement states that the access can only be used for two lots. Two lots is two lots. Also, the proposed subdivision plat that you have before you is two lots. It's Lot A and Lot B. It's only two lots. And I'm going to summarize because the presentation was good. But your LDC waiver allows a planning commission to waive requirements of the chapter to avoid unnecessary hardship that could result from a strict application of the land development code. We have that here. It's two parts. One, the provision would cause an unnecessary hardship because of the topographic or other conditions peculiar to the site. This site is unique. It's 42 acres. There's no stubout to it. This was developed now with a new residential plan. There will be a residential lot, a stubout connecting. It didn't happen based upon when all this was developed. It's also surrounded by buffer. You saw in your packet, we have an aerial, which is also here. The aerial is on page 32 of your packet. But you can look and see, all these neighborhoods were developed around it with common open area. That's wonderful unless you want a street to connect to, there's nothing close. Also, there are streams on both sides of the property. And you can see the one side with the huge wetlands area. And then at the top right, the zigzag, that's another stream. What else is unique is the 18 foot access easement that was wide enough. When, when it was granted, and it's even so unique that when planning staff originally looked at this, they thought this was illegal nonconforming because it's so different. But then they looked at it further and didn't. Finally, it's unique because the zoning is AGC. You can have two residences on the property, but it has to be under one ownership. You can still have two residences. We just want two residences with two different lots. So it would create an unnecessary hardship not to allow that because every homeowner needs their own lot. You need to be able to get financing. You need to be able to sell your lot. It's difficult, difficult to do that if you have a joint lot ownership with somebody else. The banks won't do it and your marketability when you get a sale is going to be lower. And then the second factor is departure may be made without defeating the intent of the provisions of the LDC. Well, as we stated earlier, the AGC already allows two residences. We're not changing that. We're just going to have two residents on two lots instead of one lot. There's going to be no increase or impact. And second, two residential lots on 42 acres. Well, your LDC code is designed to minimize the impacts of development. I don't think you could find anything better for this property than to have two lots on 42 acres in this area of the county where you already have such intense development. That's going to minimize the impact on the roads and other infrastructure. We just request that you follow, that you approve the waiver of the 25 foot access and allow the 18 foot width. And if you look, the 18 foot width is only in the top corner, the very small area. On the subdivision plat, it shows it also, it then widens to 25 feet in some areas and then much wider in other areas. It's just across this one little buffer strip. This will allow approval of the subdivision plat that was submitted for the two lots on 42 acres. And I think that the county and the adjacent community should, they should love this. They should be so happy. So we just request that you follow the planning staff's recommendations and findings as well. And we're here for any questions.
Thank you. Does anybody have any questions for the applicant? All right, at this time, we'll open the public hearing. Do we have a motion to open the public hearing?
I'll make a motion to open the public hearing.
Second?
All right, all those in favor? Okay, so for the public hearing, if anybody would like to speak about this item, feel free to come up at this time. And we just need you to identify yourself, name and address.
Good evening. My name is Edwin Scott Klein. I live at 247 Fort Sithia Lane in Tika Kay, South Carolina. And my property abuts this particular piece of property. And there is, we have some concerns in our neighborhood because even though Mr. Spencer says it is only two lots, why are they suing Baxter Village to get six lots? Right, if it's only supposed to be two, why are they suing for six? Our concern is that he's incrementally asking for more and more things. The old adage of getting forgiveness instead of permission. He's already cleared from aerial photographs what looked like six lots. So our concern is that this is just an incremental, the first step in trying to build a much larger footprint in that particular 42 acres. I personally have had to deal with his people before trespassing across my property to get to his without my permission. I had to move them several times. He put up basically do not trespass or warning signs on trees facing our many homeowners' properties. And he had construction equipment that was on my property that I had to then move off of my property so that he would cease and desist any further building of a fence along the property. I am concerned, based on the track record since 2002, that this is the first step of the ultimate goal of building not two lots, but more than that. Six lots, eight lots. In prior configurations of his website for New Old Whitetail, he was advertising the Whitetail community, which is what this is now called Whitetail Manor. He was advertising this back in April of 2022, and I have screenshots if you'd like to see it, before he even owned the property. So my concern, as I just stated, is that this is an incremental thing that he's trying to get a little bit of this, a little bit of that. Ultimately, he wants to build many more properties on there than what he's currently stating today. So that is my concern. And having lived there and having had to deal with the surveyors, the people trying to put a road in across my property to go over those creeks that they're so concerned about. So that's my history, my personal history. Thank you. Any questions? Thank you, everyone.
Thank you.
Is there anybody else that'd like to step forward?
Mark Berger, 225 Fort Sithia Lane. My property also abuts the heck of this guy's lot. So when they initially started, when we went to the council, about a year, year and a half ago, yeah? We asked, because they wanted to put roads through Fort Sithia into property, which was right next to mine. And so we said to the council, can we get votes of all on that hood? Every, every resident in our hood electronically? And they said no. So we went out and got what they requested, paper votes from everyone in the whole of the manor's neighborhood. We submitted those paper votes where everyone flatly said, no, we are not interested in having a road either next to my house or next to Ben's, the other property. I don't particularly care what he does in his property. I'm just again concerned if you give him the leeway on the 18 feet, what's he going to do next? So if you guys can keep him in control and he does his two lots, like he's been told he can with Baxter, I'm okay with that. I just don't want him coming through on that hood. That's it. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anybody else that'd like to speak?
I'll round out the Lake Ridge representation. Ben Bartel, 253 Fort Sithia Lane. He'll live next door to these individuals. Supportive of the waiver at tonight's meeting. Makes all the sense in the world to use an existing easement for the two properties. What I am also concerned about is future easement access rights that might come your way. And I'd rather see the existing 18 foot driveway used for any development on that 42 acres versus a future step that may look to have another easement access to access a different part of the property. So that's, you know, what, what's not shown on that map is the trail system that was going through the perimeters of the property. Once the development is done, I would love to see the community have access to those trails again. Supportive of tonight, tonight's action and then use the existing easement for any future development, reconnect the trails, pretty straight and simple.
Thank you. Does anybody else like to come forward and speak? If nobody else would, if nobody else wants to speak, we can close the public hearing at this time. Do I have a motion to close the hearing?
Make a motion to close? Second?
All right, all those in favor closing the hearing? At this point, does anybody else have any questions for staff or the applicant? If not, can we have, is there a motion? I would go ahead and make the motion to approve the waiver based on staff's findings. Is anybody, is there a second?
A second.
Okay, is there any discussion anybody want to say?
I personally don't think there's a need for discussion, but I will just say that if, if this same individual were to come back and ask for more lots, I would personally not be supporting it. But I do feel like the existing easement, especially since there was no requirement for 25 feet in 2009, seems, you know, very reasonable to me. But I would not in any way, shape or form support additional development on those two lots.
I do have kind of a follow up question to what Kate was saying. Could there be a condition put in here that approves this waiver? That we can add to what Kate had just mentioned?
Well, the existing easement agreement with Springs limits it. So I don't think there's really a need.
Okay. Okay, that's all I needed to know. Thanks.
Yeah, and, and again, just reiterating what Kate said. The easement has, has been there for many years. It was, predates the, the current code. While I understand the concerns of the residents in the area, we're not voting on few, future easements or incremental bills. We're just, we're voting on this single issue. And I, I think that the applicant has definitely demonstrated this would cause an unnecessary hardship if, if he was not to have it. So I feel like I'm in favor of approving it, so.
Might I also add that I do hope there is no, you know, on someone else's property when things like that happen? I know sometimes it's questionable where the lines are. So I hope there's just abundant, you know, taking that into account when you have somebody driving through that 18 feet. And I love the idea of reconnecting the trails, although obviously that's not something that we can comment on. But just as a, a resident of the general area, I think as, as many trail connections as we can have is, is a good thing.
Anybody else like to add anything? If not, all those in favor of recommending the approval? Anyone oppose? No, this matter passes.
Thank you.
Next item is subdivision Nation Land Company at Shera Road. The applicant is Nation Land Company LLC. Tax number is 454-00-00-029 and 454-00-00-009. Total acreage is 51.95 acres. Total lots is three, single family, three single family lots in District Two, Miss Love. And it is zoned AGC one. Hello, Marion?
Hello, Marion Ray, zoning planner for York County. Sounds like you basically just did my presentation. We have a large lot here. It's actually just north of here off 49, between Shera Road and Old McKinney Road. It's kind of a residual of another large lot development that's been going on over, for the years through an exemption. So we have the preliminary plat here, and that one's a lot, so I zoomed in for us. It's three lots. One has 100 feet of frontage on Old McKinney Lot Three. The other two have legal frontage on Shera Road. The hashed area is TreeSave. It's a TreeSave easement. And the TreeSave count is kind of right in the middle of everything there. We'll go through the findings. The site is serviced by Private Well and Septic. They will have to, they do not have to have that, the permits from SEDES. They've renamed themselves because they are larger than five acres. Single family isn't allowed residential, a single family residential isn't allowed use. The AGC zoning district has a maximum residential density of .2 dwelling units per acre. This one is proposing .06 dwelling units per acre. A TIA was not required for this development. And it does have adequate street connectivity. Both, Shera Road is maintained by SCDOT. Old McKinney is maintained by York County. It's bounded by those two, those two roads, large lot subdivision, which was part of the previous exemptions, and a smaller single lot subdivision to the north. But sidewalks aren't required because of the lot width. Neither is AGC one, so open space and buffers are not required and they are not provided. And again, that tree survey has been completed and approved by staff. The staff recommends approval of this preliminary plat. The staff recommends approval of this preliminary plot. I'll go back to that picture.
I got a question for you, Marion.
Yes, sir.
So Old McKinney Road, it's a county road.
Mm-hmm.
And it stops, like, in back of that property, right?
Yeah, just past it.
And there's no proposed improvement to go, you know, that road extended over to Shera Road or anything like that?
It's a larger-than-five-acre lot size, so they do not have to improve the roads.
Okay. Thanks.
Is there any other questions for Marion?
Just to be clear with what we just talked about, because of how these are arranged, nobody needs an easement to get to anybody's other property because they're all against the road, right?
No easements. Everybody has frontage.
And, and that top right-hand corner up there where that little notch is, is 25 feet wide.
Yeah, this is 100 feet wide right here.
Okay, that's right. It's at 25 feet, so we're good, right?
And you probably noticed this little line here, that's a school district line. That's just the tax evaluation. It's not a separate lot. It's a single lot.
Okay.
I make a motion to approve?
Okay. Is there any discussion?
Second one's for me, Bonnie.
I have no discussion. All those in favor? Anyone opposed? It is unanimous. Next item is subdivision Flowing Meadows. The applicant is Julie Stromflow. Tax map number 453-00-00-009. Total acreage is 57.41 acres. Three single-family lots in Council District Two, and it is zoned AGC one.
Okay. Move on. Here's the aerial picture. This is right around the corner from the first one. It's also on 49, on the corner of 49 and Davis Farm. Both are maintained by SEDOT. We had a preliminary plot in earlier for this same lot, or same acreage. A couple of lots to the north were divided off. So every division of this land has to come back through here. Here, oh, and that's mostly pasture land. Anything you see that looks like trees kind of toward the pond area is actually like little scrubby, like, not actual trees. They don't meet the six-inch requirement. And then we have the preliminary plot here, and again, I zoomed in. AGC one for three lots, total of 57 acres. You have tract, now I've lost my numbers. Two smaller tracts are against the road, and then the larger track has frontage on both Davis Road, Davis Farm to the north and to the south, and along Charlotte Highway. The frontage to the north is mostly because the pond itself kind of cuts that large piece of land in half effectively, so that just provides an area for, if they want to divide it off future, they have land to do it. You can see the tree save easements there on the larger piece of land. Got three here, the findings again. Serviced by private water and septic systems. They're over five acres in size, so we don't have to have the permits before they get approved. Single-family residential isn't allowed use. AGC zoning, again, that .2 dwelling units per acre. This one is a higher-density one, .05 dwelling units per acre. And a TIA was not required for this division. So the development is accessed from Davis Farm and Charlotte Highway, both maintained by the SEDOT, and sidewalks are not required due to those lot widths. And again, with AGC one, no open space or buffers are required. They're not provided. And then the tree survey has been completed and accepted by staff, so staff recommends approval.
Any questions for Marion?
Yeah, good. Real quick, just, just so I'm clear. So we have the three running along, I'm sorry, Davis Farm, right? So there's those three tracks, that little sliver at the top of Davis Farm that goes back and over into the pond. So that's, hey, we're not touching this part of the property, we're just breaking out these other three pieces. Is that what's happening?
Well, it's part of the third piece. So the third, there's two small pieces right here on Davis Farm. There's one here, and then one here, and then the rest of this is all one piece of land with the pond and everything else. But since the pond extends to the back of these, to these lots, they wanted to make sure there's still going to be access.
Okay, that's, that's why I didn't become a mechanic engineer, because the dash lines and solid lines got me all the time. But the dash line is property line.
Yeah, the weighting is not.
And then the solid line is easer, property line, solid line, dash line's easement off the property line. Is that right?
Those are setbacks.
Setbacks, sorry.
Yeah.
Setbacks. Okay. Yep. All right. Thank you, ma'am. Now, now I see what's happening.
Kind of to go along with what Mike was mentioning, should there be stipulations or are there already stipulations that they have pond access on Track Four and Track Five?
One more time?
Do they?
Do the two smaller tracks have pond access, and should there be any stipulations to that?
They are specifically designed to stop short of the pond. It's this family land. Several family members actually live to the southeast of this, and they want to keep the pond.
Yeah, I guess what I'm saying is, does Track Four and Track Five have access? You said they have access through this tree save area to the pond. That's what I was asking.
That's, that's still private property. It's a tree save easement, so those are the trees that are saved for the entire lot or the entire development.
It's part of the track.
They do not have direct access to the pond.
So they do not have track access?
Correct.
That's correct.
Okay.
The tree saves tied in with Track Three, if I understand what you're telling me, right?
Yeah, the larger track.
Yes, I knew that.
Okay.
I'm just asking a question.
Can, can they get there? I don't know that there's a fence here that, there yet, right? So could they walk through that tree save and get to the pond? Yes, but they would be on somebody else's property.
That's between them.
Is that?
Yep. Okay, yeah, I, I didn't know if they had access. You've answered my question.
Okay.
Thank you.
Anybody else have a question? If not, is there a motion?
I'll move to approve.
I'll second.
Is there any discussion? All those in favor? Anyone opposed? Next item is rezoning 24-30. Michelle Kilgore, applicant owner, requesting to rezone two parcels that total 0.40 acres from RSF 40 to RMX 10. The subject parcels are located on West Lakewood Drive, Rock Hill. The properties are referenced as tax map numbers 586-01-06, 014, and 015 in Council District Six, Mr. Huckabee. Hello, Diane.
Hello, good evening, everybody. So our first case here is a request to be able to rezone two parcels that total .40 acres from RSF 40 to RMX 10. And the purpose for this is to be able to combine those two parcels to create one single-family home. You've seen parcels in this area here before. We had a previous rezoning in another neighborhood, another part of this neighborhood. But it's located off of Mount Gallant, in the northern part of the Rock Hill sort of area. This property here, this development was applied in 1957, so there are a variety of size lots, as you can see from the aerials, and I've shown before, that some of the homes actually go across multiple parcels because the parcels are so small. And so the intention here is to be able to rezone these two parcels here into, I'm sorry, to, rezone to RMX 10 to be able to combine them to be able to construct one home. The property does, owner does own all four of these, so they'll be able to develop a house on this property right here. Zoning for the area here, the majority of the property in this area is RSF 40, 40,000 square foot lots, but there is some RMX 20 just to the south of here. As you can see here, these are the ones that were rezoned probably a couple of years ago by now. Comprehensive plan for the area here is neighborhood residential. And as we know, that allows for a mix of housing types, residential lot sizes, and a close proximity neighborhood servicing uses. We're recommending approval. This request lies to the future land use map, the comprehensive plan. Use is allowed in this development as some of the ones surrounding neighborhood. Any questions for staff?
Could you back up to the picture that, the aerial? You mentioned something on this slide about ownership, and I missed.
Right, so the applicant actually owns all four of these parcels here.
Okay.
They have a house right here. So all this stuff here, we'll go back over there. In case you were like, there's stuff here, this will all get moved over. And they'll build a house in this location right here.
But are, but the, where the house sits currently is actually on two lots?
It is, yeah.
That are RMX forty?
RMX forty, RSF forty.
RSF forty?
Yes.
Yeah. There's actually a number of homes in that neighborhood that are like that.
So, so does that mean it's legal non-conforming?
Legal non-conforming, correct.
Oh, my goodness, I made my vocabulary.
So if they want to put an addition on, they would have to rezon first?
Yeah.
That's what I was.
I'm sorry, brother.
Go ahead, go ahead.
Yeah, just, so do we, you know, we've had some things come before us recently about either council-initiated actions or other things about changing zoning. Would something like an area like this ever fall into, hey, here's a blanket recommendation that all this be rezoned to be in the right?
That's very true. And actually, we're looking at that. I've spoken to Matt. The planning commission actually also has the right to be able to initiate a rezoning. And this might be an opportunity to be able to do that. And so I've been looking at this neighborhood. I'm going to zoom back out to the zoning map for there. Should I get more? But there's a lot of different lot sizes, so we're trying to figure out what's the best way to be able to do this. Because in some cases, the lot sizes, individual ones, might be less than 6,000 square feet, which is RMX six, and so now we don't have a zoning district that goes that small. But if they were to combine properties, then they would make it larger than that. So it's going to be a challenge, but our goal here is to see if we can come back with you and figure out what's the best way to be able to address this ongoing issue. You know, one thought was, do we just focus on properties that are vacant? And because those are the ones that would be potentially for redevelopment. And so I'm kind of looking at vacant properties, I'm looking at ownership, to figure out what's the best way to be able to address this neighborhood to make it all conforming.
Because the one next door with the, where's this in, right? So the one, the two at the top, you said are owned by the same person? All right. So they get two different tax bills because they have two different pieces of property?
I think the tax system has gotten smart on this. And I've noticed, looking at the different, the tax records, it'll have it as vacant, and there's some sort of a code that knows it's part of an adjacent property. So that one's considered, probably get one bill that references two properties, but they know that one is being occupied by a house on another bill, so.
I bring that up because I can't remember when we had it this year, but we had somebody who had some confusion about how many tax bills they were getting and what they really had and whatnot, and so, okay.
Very, yep.
All right. Thank you, ma'am.
You're welcome.
So. And really, all I'm really doing is kind of reiterating. So there's a lot of non-conformity in here, and I was noticing, you know, even in 1986, of course, it says 2086, I know that's 1986. Anyways, it says it was, it was zoned RC one.
Correct.
Is that part of the problem that we're seeing where it went to RS 40 because it was like RC one, or can you explain that?
So when we made that change to RSF 40, to the 40,000 square foot lot, even when it was before that, it still would have been non-conforming to the code we made that change. It goes back to 57s when we didn't have zoning. And so therefore, there probably weren't those same lot size requirements that we have now. So just that one change did not make these properties non-conforming. I think when RC one, it was probably an 8,000 square foot minimum lot size, if I can remember correctly. It's been a few years.
Okay, so, okay. Yeah, I was just wondering why they made it RSF 40 and it was non-conforming.
Yeah, so the RSF 40 was simply a matter of when we did our new zoning code, it switched over, anything that was RC one just became RSF 40. It was just a change of a name. And so RC one really had no, you couldn't tell what that means. Where RSF 40, it's intentional residential, single-family, 40,000 square foot lot. So that was part of the change when they did their new code, to be able to have that, that change of names.
Okay, thanks.
Yep.
So with this neighborhood residential zoning, I'm noticing there's a pattern with our RMX 10.
Mm-hmm.
Is, what's, how, how are we determining what zoning is going to be used?
So RMX 10 is, for instance, when these lots get combined, the combined total is less than 20, more than 10, so it's somewhere within there. And same thing for the ones that were over here that we already rezoned, RMX 10. It was, the lot sizes were greater than 10, less than 20, so RMX 10 was the right district to choose to go to. And so we can do that when the applicant is, is intending to be able to combine properties. We know we're going to get to a, a greater lot size to be able to pick the district. Now, if we had one, two that came in that were, you know, three and three to get a 6,000 square foot lot, we'd have to do RMX six to make that work. So it all depends upon what, at the end of the day, how big will the lot be? That determines what district to choose.
I mean, is there any consideration being taken into, because it seems like you're going from a, a lower-density type zone into a higher one with the RMX 10, so?
These are already established lots. I mean, technically, if they can make it work, that neighbor could, that property owner, they could put two hounds there right now, if they can make everything work by getting an engineered system, smaller home. So you're not really, they're already, they're, it's changing the different district, RMX 10 from 40, but the density in actually is coming down less because they're going to combine that property. So I can see the district name is more, is higher density. However, the actual development pattern is not. I would have concerns if we were to find areas where a bunch of vacant lots that were small, that we go to RMX six, because now we're adding in a different type of, of development. So an RMX six will allow for a state townhome or an apartment. And so that's why I'm looking at this closely, to figure out what were the implications if we have to match that lot size? What could we achieve? How would that change what's being plotted here? So that's kind of what we're looking at as well.
Anybody else have any questions?
Is, does this also combine the properties or no? This is just?
This action?
Yes.
No, this action does not. So as soon as it gets rezoned, she will come in and submit something, and then that Marion takes over and she'll combine the properties.
Okay. So is there a condition that this be done, that they be combined or no?
No, required.
There's no condition, but she would then not have, she would have two non-conforming lots, so.
She probably wouldn't want to combine them.
Okay.
All right.
I'd make a motion to approve.
Second.
All right, is there any other discussion? All those in favor? Anyone opposed? No, it is unanimous. All right. I'll be requiesering myself on the next couple items.
While that's happening, just a quick, random question. Is there a different setback requirement based on the roadside, whether it's two-lane, four-lane on the piece of property?
Setback requirements?
Yes.
No, I don't believe there is, unless it was an AGC and then that would have, I believe, a larger setback requirement. So the setbacks are going to be based upon?
So the one we saw a couple ago, the setbacks on the road is because you're setback from the road, period, not because of the size of the road?
Correct.
Okay. Thank you.
Yeah, that has a 100-foot setback on an AGC property.
Okay, so it was because it's zoned AGC that it was, that's what made it look funny? Okay, okay.
And that was their front setback, I suppose? That's why one was so much deeper than the other one?
Well, they were on each road, right?
Well, did both of them have the 100 feet because it's going down?
Yes. Yeah, and that's, it just looked like, wow. And, okay, now I get it, because it's AGC. Okay, okay.
But the front and the side and the back are all different, right?
Yes. Yeah, that's right. When you look around, it moved, and that's what I was, something about major road.
On all lots, it's like that, I mean.
Okay. All right, thank you.
You're welcome. We're good.
Rezoning 24-31, Demetrius Kocouris, applicant, DSK Investments LLC owner, requesting to rezone a 0.602-acre parcel from RSF 40 to RMX 10. The subject parcel is located on Paramount Drive, Rock Hill. The property is referenced as tax map number 486-01-07-002, Council District Six, Councilman Huckabee.
This request here is similar but different from the previous one. So this is to rezone one parcel from .602 acres from RSF 40 to RMX 10. And the purpose here is to subdivide the property to be able to construct two single-family homes. Each lot will be about 13,000 square feet. This is located in the exact same neighborhood we're just looking at before, in just a different portion of it. Zooming in here, this is the property here. Mount Gallant goes around. This is actually a restaurant next door to it. Zooming in here, this is, uh, the property here, uh, Mount Gallant goes around. This is actually a restaurant next door to it. Zooming into the prop, the property, when it was originally platted, this was actually three lots. And so at some point from fifty-seven, so I think in the mid-eighties, they came in and they recombined it all into one parcel. And so at this time, they would like to be able to subdivide it into two, to be able to create two lots. So what's the other one? The zoning around here is RSF forty. It is adjacent to GC as well. Comprehensive plan for the area here, also neighborhood residential. As we know what that is for mixed housing types and residential lot sizes located close proximity to neighborhood and service, serving uses. Um, we are recommending approval for this. It aligns with the comprehensive future land use map and the comprehensive plan. Um, this is allowed to similar to those in the surrounding neighborhood. And I did include here, uh, the site plan they've submitted to us to be able to show you how this would work. They'd be creating two lots and put two homes on this, this property. And I'm gonna kind of go back, and you can see from here, the lot sizes that are here and the ones that are above it, those are some, they kind of get a bit of a scale. Um, it's still larger than the small ones. It's similar to these sizes next to it. Um, but if we kind of come back to here, you can see where you'd have, you know, kind of cut down through here, very similar to the ones across the street. About a thirteen thousand square foot lot.
So with, um, commercial being right next to it and buffers between the two types of zoning, whose responsibility is that and is it?
It's responsibility of the commercial property. They would buffer the residential.
So do they, I mean, there doesn't really appear to be a buffer there, so.
Yeah.
Will there be requirements?
No, no, they were there and they're all there together. So, um, they should have, and maybe they had at some point, it's sort of gone away. Um, put in a buffer, um, from that residential neighborhood. But that, we'd have to have more now if they were to come in at this point.
Diane, um, if you go to page sixty-eight, it shows, I think that's, you said that's a restaurant on the right?
Yeah, I don't have page sixty-eight. I don't know what's on that page.
Do you not know what restaurant that is, sir?
No.
We've gotta get you all down there.
Oh, yeah.
It's a fish place.
That's the fish place on Mount Gallant, yes.
Alright. What it, what it shows is Joiner's Drive is seventeen point two left of property line in the house number two. There you go.
Yeah.
Is that gonna be abandoned?
Yeah, we'll have to figure all that out when it came time to subdivide. We're trying to figure out today, what is this? And so we will work all that out when they come in to subdivide the properties to what that actually is. And I'm fairly certain the person that owns this property, the restaurant also owns it. They'll work it out.
Should that be, and, and this is just a question, should that be a condition for approval?
No, because we'll have to do that in, um, when they come in to subdivide, we'll have to figure out what that is and then take care of that in that process, as opposed to being added a condition as a rezoning.
Okay, thanks.
Any other questions for Diane? Is there a motion?
Make a motion to approve.
I'll second.
Motion and second. Any discussion? All in favor?
Need to swing by there and get some seafood sometime, bro.
Antonio, before you read this one, I was informed that, um, in my cut and paste, number five here, the council district is two. So on this next item here, it should be two Love, not six Huckabee.
Okay.
Thank you.
Alright, rezoning, twenty-four dash thirty-two, Daniel J. Baloo. Applicant Titan Land Partners LLC owner, requesting to rezone fifteen parcels that total approximately two hundred and fifteen acres from RMX ten to RUD. Subject parcels are located off Concord Road, York. The properties are referenced as tax map numbers five eight one dash zero zero dash zero zero dash, dash zero five four through dash zero six two, uh, dash zero six four, dash zero six five, dash zero, zero seven zero and dash zero seven one, Council District Two, Councilwoman Love. Diane again.
Alright, this is a request to rezone fifteen parcels that total two hundred and fifteen point two nine acres from RMX ten to RUD. And the purpose here is to allow the property to be developed in a rural manner. It's similar to existing lot, lots scattered throughout this peninsula. Essentially, this is gonna go to RUD to take out some of the requirements that are required in RMX ten. Property's located on the peninsula here. It's just beyond the, the Duke Energy, uh, Nuclear Station. Zooming into the property here, it's, like I said, it's two hundred and fifteen acres. Um, on the peninsula, it is surrounded by a number of, of homes already established that range of about eighty-four of the homes throughout here, and they range lot sizes from about point four seven to two and a half acres. The average lot size is about one acre on the parcels that are around here. So this RUD zoning would be very much similar to the parcels that are already there. Zoning for the area, like I said, this is RMX ten is the majority of this area. It's taught, was established, zoning was established many years ago. If you can recall, a few months ago, maybe six months ago or so, we rezoned some property right towards the center. That's that three green parcels right there to RUD. That was for that similar purpose, was to be able to remove the requirement to do open space. Comprehensive land, or future land use map for the area here, it's rural residential. And as you know, that's places that have rural character with homes on an acre or more, separated by farm fields, pastures or forests. Typically, these have, uh, private, uh, road networks and well on septic. We're recommending approval of this request. It aligns with the future land use map, land use map and the comprehensive plan. And these lot sizes are proposed lots are similar to or larger than those that are in the surrounding area. I do want to make note that over the past few days, I've received about six emails from property, property owners on the peninsula. And they were making a request for a condition, um, to have a minimum five acre lot size and twenty percent open space. Um, like I was saying in my presentation, um, on this peninsula itself already, there are about eighty-four homes. And they range in size from zero point four seven, so half an acre, to the biggest one we have right there right now is two point nine two acres, with the average are less than an acre. And so any kind of additional restrictions on them would be different from what's on the existing properties. We don't support that recommendation, that condition.
So, well, there's a question.
Yeah, there's a question.
Is a question sent?
So, you know, as it says on page seventy-four, earlier this year, county council approved a similar rezoning for a seventeen acre tract in the center of the subject area. And we had put a stipulation, which you just said about no less than five acres. So what you're saying to us tonight is that we can't put the same condition on-
No, I'm not, not saying you can't. I'm saying staff does not recommend add the condition. County council can put the conditions on if they would choose to. You can recommend county council to do that. Staff is not recommending that, is what we're saying.
Okay. I'd like to recommend that.
That's, that's fine.
Yeah, I, I'd like to recommend that.
So need a motion?
Hold on, hold on.
Oh, wait, wait.
Yeah, I'm sorry.
Yeah, hold on. Any other questions for Diane?
Yes, hang on. And, and so, this is a one we've seen before as well. Didn't we go through something of a sub of a subdivision or a something earlier this year on this one?
Yes, there's been a couple things here. I believe there was a, um, a major subdivision. Marion, if you can call, I don't remember exactly what they had before in here. There wasn't a, it was the appeal.
There was some question about a major, whether it became a major subdivision or something, and whether it fell under this, and we had a lot of discussion.
Yes.
Yeah. Didn't we have an appeal or something around that?
Yeah, that is correct.
Okay, and so, this is all that same area, right?
Same owner, same area, correct. Different properties.
Okay, and I, what I recall from that were the concerns of how busy Concord Road would become and whether the, and the size of the bridge and being able to do so many many, many, many more homes there. I understand the point you're making about what's currently there. But if what is currently there gets added to by what could possibly be there, we might be overloading that area. And that, that was the part that was always unclear to me when we talked about this before. And with this, this is a rezoning, so there's not anything about TIAAs or anything like that that we have with a subdivision plan, right?
Actually, there, this, this would require, if they do more than twenty-nine lots, they're required to do a TIA. And so I've seen numbers between twenty-nine and thirty-four that they're intending to do. So if they get, if they get above twenty-nine, they're required to do a TIA.
Okay.
Um, I, I think they will be. Um, I don't think twenty-nine lots is going to do a whole lot to the network. And therefore, I can't imagine what they're gonna be required to do based upon twenty nine, twenty-nine lots.
Okay. I'm all set on questions. Thank you.
Alright, is there a motion?
Yeah, I'd like to make a motion that we approve this, but add the conditions that it requires a five acre minimum deed restriction for the two hundred and fifty, two hundred and fifteen acres or thirty-four parcels. And that each parcel has a twenty percent green space requirement or-
So would that be a by deed restriction? You, you added that, or would just be a condition for a five acre lot? You wouldn't need to have a deed restriction?
Yeah, I, I, five acre lot, thank you.
And twenty, what, twenty percent open space?
Yes.
Can we call that green space? Because open space has a very specific, you said green space?
Yeah, because that's what I think originally they had as, on that seventeen acre, seventeen acre tract.
Clarify that, this green space is not saying that each lot needs twenty percent. It says within the total of this.
That was gonna be my next question. Is it gonna be per lot or could it be more spread out between the entire development?
Um, I think what Mike, what you just said was correct. Yes.
For the entire acreage, for the entire two hundred and fifteen, am I getting that right?
Hard to do it per parcel.
It would be difficult.
Yeah.
So, right. Okay, and, and so I think what the intention of the addendum is, is to kind of come back to that twenty-nine to thirty-five ish lot size, right?
Right.
Okay.
So, requiring the five acre minimum and then the twenty percent green space requirement for the-
Entirety.
Entirety.
Gotcha.
Alright, so we have a, a, a motion on the floor. Is there a second?
Actually, I have another question. Can I ask a question before we second or?
Yes.
Here, go for it.
Okay, can you, now I've got a few. So, when we went over this before with the existing, this is the same owner. And as I, yeah, as I recall, so those lots are five acres?
Yes.
Yes. But if we just go to RUD, then the minimum is one, right?
Correct.
Okay, so, at the, at, at the most, based on topography and everything else, what could they put there?
What could they?
Yeah.
Well, I mean, it's two hundred and fifteen acres and, um, you know, that would not be able to equate to two hundred and fifteen homes.
Right.
For instance, when I was doing that school assessment, how would it be between those two, the different categories? I just did two hundred and fifteen, guess what we have? It would be some number less than that. Just given the, given the topography, given the coves and everything, you'll never get to that max. Um, so you would never get to that, but you'd get somewhere between, you know, the twenty, two hundred and fifteen divided by five versus, you know, by one something.
And you don't, or staff doesn't recommend the five acre, just because it's an unneeded restriction or?
Well, the comprehensive plan recommends rural residential. And so rural residential aligns with RUD, which is one acre lot. So RUD allows for a one acre lot. So if the comprehensive plan had that as being agricultural, then we would say go to AGC or RUD and have the five. But it doesn't have that. It says rural residential, which lines with RUD and one acre lots. So that's why we're going with what the plan supports.
I think the only reason I brought it up, it was, it was presented in the original, seventeen acres that is in green here. I'm assuming that's in the area that's green, correct? That was what was put in there.
Right.
Just for consistency purposes. That's all I'm asking, or recommending.
I think we did a second, that we're gonna have this.
Yeah. Will you second for that motion?
We, we got lost between questions and discussion, right?
Thank you.
What happened. Okay, so parliamentary, we have a motion.
Motion on the floor, is there a second?
And so I'll second so we can continue the discussion.
Alright.
Okay.
So this, we got a motion, second on the floor, now for discussion.
So another question, and I'm, I wish I had gone back and reread the other case. But we were concerned about those five acres because, again, it was a subdivision with, we were coming back and re-subdividing, correct? And that was, we kind of felt like they were trying to hold more space than we thought was appropriate or, okay. But we don't feel that's the case now. And, I mean, I, I feel like there's a disconnect. Like, why, why did we, why were we so, um, concerned about keeping it at five acres for those parcels? And now we're less concerned. Has, what's changed?
I believe the previous one was a, a mitigation, was a mediation from a appeal. And therefore, that's where the mediation landed. So I, I don't know, that was all that's, that's where, that was what the agreement was. It was the, the appeal was whether or not they were exempt from the whole five acre requirements. And so as a part of that, there was a mediation. The agreement was to, okay, we'll, we'll agree with this, but we're gonna have these stipulations of five acres and twenty percent open space. And I want to come back, clarify that this is not the properties from before. This is already, this was rezoned with conditions. That was a whole different thing. It was, it was one other, I don't know which type, which one it was, but it was not that.
Right, further, further.
This for clarification.
Sure.
Alright, so, any other discussion? So we got a motion and a second. All those in favor? All those opposed?
So motion fails, cause nothing happened.
There's a tie. Alright. I'd like to make a motion to approve with staff recommendations.
I would second that motion.
Alright, we got a motion and a second. All those in favor?
We have some discussion first?
I'm sorry.
That's alright, so.
Discussion?
Is, is there any concern? What I remember hearing from the public when they were here last time is they didn't want that area to get built out in three quarter to one acre sizes because of their concerns about the traffic and what would happen to that peninsula based on the way things are now. So, I, I understand, what I'm hearing from staff is that they're, they're holding very firm to the descriptions that they, that has been read in the comprehensive plan and what it is. Yet, kind of to your point, Kate, there was something that changed about this five acre thing that came out of a discussion among lots of people. And so I, I want to be careful that we're not just falling in line with the black and white letter of what things are, and we're taking into consideration all of the information. Because to me, if that's what happened out of a resolution of a, what, what did you say it was? A mediation? That if that was the mediated response, then maybe we should be looking to that as well instead of just sticking to the black and white. So that's kind of why I'm having a hard time just going without some kind of, um, conditions around this.
No, I, I understand that, and I, I have some of the same concerns, but because the smaller lot size will trigger that TIA, I feel more confident.
The TIA would be triggered with larger, because what Diane said was twenty-nine lots, right?
So they'll still do the TIA. One thing that would trigger, would if you go to a one acre lot, then they would no longer be exempt. So that would trigger something major. So that in itself will, um, trigger the applicant to have to go a different process um, that by going, so right now, if they go with the five acres, they're exempt from sections of the code right now. Including the roads, having to be able to improve those roads. They go to anything less than five acres.
Well, is, um, back, back to some of the stuff we talked about before, would all this, these, do you have water and sewer here?
No, this is all well and septic.
So this would all need to be well and septic, and so if it went below five, we'd have to go back through what you were talking about on DEHEC and whatnot.
It could went below two acre-
If it went below two acres, we would have to have the permit. Um, there's two problems out here, is the utilities end before the bridge. They do not go across the bridge or under the lake there, and the land doesn't perk well. So, it's very doubtful one-acre lots would ever be developed there because.
These are all, right, these are all things to, okay? So, these are, these are all things we have to talk through and understand that while we may not be, um, so, let me talk out of the other side of my mouth, because I was talking out of this side to start with this. On the other side is, well, the conditions of this, of the situation is some of those restrictions are being put in place without us having to say anything.
Exactly, and that's always my, um, that's always my first choice, is to have, you know, what is already there actually dictate the restrictions as opposed to any sort of government and/or non-government involvement.
I, I agree with that philosophy as well. So, what I'm hearing from, as we get more information, is it doesn't look like there would be feasibility for stuff much below five acres from a practical, technical standpoint of utilities. And then, if it was, great, but if you get below a certain amount, you're gonna trigger a whole different set of regulations you're gonna have to fall under that
May in itself prevent anything.
Correct. Okay.
Remind me again about sidewalks, when do those come in?
The lot width?
Lot width. Okay.
Correct.
Um, any thoughts about green space as part of a? If, if, if we don't want to say that there's a particular size, are we meeting the intention of other things that have happened around this to say, hey, maybe you ought to have twenty percent green space out of the whole thing?
Well, I would, I think we have ordinances, or, you know, I think we already have those in place. And if it, we get to that level, then we need to follow those. But I don't feel personally like we need to impose additional restrictions.
Okay, I'm, I'm not nece- necessarily advocating.
No, I understand.
I'm trying to noodle through this as us thinking out loud about all the different things that are involved with this.
And they're required to do tree save, correct, Marion?
Yes.
Yeah, so you're working to get twenty percent of tree save? And if we can kind of go back, there's a few trees there. So, well, it may not, and that would be, uh, what, like, the previous ones you saw before, they had those, those tree saves there. So, in a sense, those trees would be maintained, and it's twenty percent. And so, I think you'd be achieving what you'd probably get anyway for that, that green space.
So, we're back to by virtue of the way things are, that twenty percent would be in there anyway, and we don't need to stipulate it.
Correct.
So, would a tree survey be per lot, or would it be for the entire acreage?
It's the entire acreage, and so, you know, and there'd be, they would, they would calculate how much trees they have, must retain twenty percent of that, and that can be spread out throughout that. So, it would not be on each individual, or it could not, doesn't have to be.
Well, I'm thinking more along the line of grand trees and things like that, I.
Yeah, it's a different thing.
Yeah.
Yeah.
But those are identified in the trees.
You have some easements through there right now, or you have some sewer, there's some utility easements in there. So, that's gonna make, some of the lots may not be able to be able to achieve that. So, they might not get it, but somebody else, they're gonna have, you know, portion constraints, or somebody else might not.
So, I, I think what I've heard in the discussion is the recommendations that you wanted to make as an addendum seem to be kind of baked into this without us saying anything about the addendum, okay? And I'm.
I don't agree with that.
Okay, and that's.
Yeah.
All right. Any more discussion? All those in favor? All opposed? Three to one. Nate Matthew, Matthew coming up.
Whenever you're ready.
Welcome back.
Thank you. Oh, okay, yeah, rezoning twenty-four dash thirty-three. Adam and Brandy speak, applicants, Josh and Kylie Green, owners requesting to rezone a two-acre portion of a twenty-one acre parcel from AGC to RUD. The subject parcel is located at eight-eleven Carson Road, York. The property is referenced as tax map number four-zero-one-zero-zero-zero-seven. Council District Three, Mr. Atkins.
Yeah, this is a request to rezone a, a two-acre portion of a twenty-one acre parcel from AGC to RUD. And the purpose here is to be able to subdivide the parcel to be able to construct one single-family home on the two-acre portion. Property is located off of Carson Road, which is sort of in between, uh, City of York and McConnell's. Looking at the property here in red, you can see around there, there are some very, very large parcels that are, that are budding their property and throughout this area. There are a few smaller lots, let me kind of stay with that one, actually. Um, in this area right here, and there's a couple of lots throughout there, but for the majority of the properties here are ten acres, twenty-one acres, and, and two-hundred and plus acres. So, this property here is currently vacant. There is a, a utility building on this property in the back of it. The intention here is to be able to rezone, uh, this portion right here, which is about two acres, to be able to go to RUD. A zoning for the area here is AGC, um, and there is some RUD one. I mentioned these, these properties over here, we'll talk about those again in a minute. Comprehensive plan for the area here is agricultural. As we know, that's area that you use for farmlands and forestry, um, timberlands, where you have low-density, single-family homes. Um, so, staff is recommending denial, and, uh, for a couple of different reasons why we don't support this. The first one is it does not like the future land use map, the Comprehensive Plan, it recommends here to be AGC. Um, the proposed lot size is not similar to those in the surrounding area. The parcel is not adjacent to any RUD parcels, and it might be considered spot zoning. So, we did look closely at this neighborhood that is right here. This is within about a thousand feet from this property right here, and that was rezoned in twenty-thirteen to, to RUD one. Um, the complaint didn't support that, but it was, it was rezoned to that. But that in itself should not be the impetus or the character of this area here, so we do not support this request. Any questions for staff?
Can we go the satellite picture real quick? So, that, is that a home at the corner, or is that a barn?
No, that's like a, probably a barn.
Okay, so there is no single family on this piece of property?
No, there may have been one at one time, I think it may have been demolished. So, the intention is to be able to just cut out and use the property up there.
Okay.
And the property next to it, that is a home, but it's on more than five acres?
The property over here, just, I don't believe that's gonna be five acres, and so, I need to go back and figure out why that is. And there's a couple of different reasons. It could have been a family exemption, where we allowed that to happen, where folks can, have five, less than five acres for their family. Um, it could have been established many, many years ago, and so, it was before we even had zoning or land use. So, I don't know why, and the same thing for the property next door. So, I need to do, whoops, a little bit of research to figure out the history of some of these other properties around there. But they're not zoned RUD, so we wouldn't support it.
Couple, couple of the, real quick. There are some differences in animal use between RUD and AGC, aren't there?
Yeah.
Okay, and my understanding was you couldn't have horses on less than five acres. Right, and AGC limit is a minimum of five, so if you wanted horses,
Got my handy dandy looks here.
you'd have to be AGC, right?
So, for equestrian uses.
Yep.
Um, there is a use condition, and I don't know whether it is driven by, if it's just available, just required in AGC or RUD, but there is a minimum lot size for that, I think that is the use condition, but I don't know whether it's.
So, I'm, I'm remember a minimum acreage, but it's not zoned?
Correct.
Oh, okay.
Yes, yes, it's not, it's the same zoning for equestrian uses for non-commercial throughout this. But there is, there is a, like I said, there is a supplement regulation.
Right, so if the, the sliver is cut off, these people won't be able to have horses, they won't be able to have certain things at that size. However, if they made a request to cut this off and make it five acres and leave the zoning alone, there'd be no issue, is that?
It's twenty-one acres, they could cut out five acres.
I understand, that's what I'm saying. So, if they cut out five, they wouldn't need a zoning change request, they'd just be subdividing the property.
Correct.
And then at five acres, they would have a lot of the ability to do things that you would come to expect in an AGC environment with larger acreages, that by changing the zoning and making it smaller, there could be some differences in what they're able to do.
Right.
Okay.
And this is not a family member?
I don't believe so.
Oh, it's one, one more curveball since we've had all the great things tonight. So, is there a potential for a waiver to be able to subdivide and leave it AGC but two acres?
No, that would be considered a variance, and you cannot do a variance for lot size.
Okay, so I'm in a different process, so the.
Right, and you can't do, you can't do a lot size variance, so that wouldn't happen.
Understood, yeah, yeah, but the, what I'm just kind of clarifying for everything is we talked about a waiver earlier denied as a method to correct and make something work.
Right, yes.
But that's not something that can be used in this case.
That's correct, and if you can remember too, you think about waivers are from one chapter, one fifty-four. They come here, a variance, one fifty-five, they go to the Board of Zoning Appeals. That's how they separate.
Thank you, very good, thank you, ma'am. I would like to make a motion to go with the staff recommendation and deny this.
I second.
Okay, is there any discussion?
Just, again, I think if, if this was intended to be divided out, I think they can do that with the five acres and still get to where they want without having to do the rezoning, and that, that's the path I would recommend that they take, rather than trying to have what, what really could be spot rezoning for this area.
I agree, I, uh, I would not use the, the nine lots as the, uh, basis for, uh, a rezoning recommendation. I think the, the future land use map is very clear about this. Um, this is all supposed to be, uh, ag, and so, I think it's, uh, I think it's appropriate to, to keep it that way, so.
Yeah, I agree.
Does anybody have anything else they'd like to add? Okay, all those in favor of the denial? That's unanimous. And the next item is rezoning twenty-four dash thirty-four, King, Kings Mountain Investments LLC and P Square Investments LLC. The applicant owner requesting to rezone three parcels that total six-point-five acres from RSF forty to OI. The subject parcels are located at thirty-seven oh-one and thirty-seven, Seventeen Pleasant Road and twelve ninety-one Altura Road, Fort Mill. The properties are referenced as tax map numbers seven twenty dash zero-zero, dash zero-zero, dash zero-zero-seven, zero-zero-eight, and two-six-oh, Council One, Mr. Adet.
Okay, so this is a rezoning to, a request to rezone three parcels that total six-point-five acres from RSF forty to OI. And the purpose here is to be able to assemble these three parcels to develop a site in a variety of uses that could include daycare, medical office building, and professional services. The properties are located at, like, like we're talking about, at the, it fronts on two roads, Altura on one side, and then Pleasant Road on the other. It's, uh, the northern part of Fort Mill, just south of Nickleburg County. Uh, looking at the area here, this is, uh, an area here where you see a lot of distribution centers, warehouses, but Steel Creek, which kind of runs through here, sort of creates some kind of a change, for the most part, from the, the distribution, commercial warehouse area that you might see along Carowinds Boulevard, but then transitions back down Pleasant Road, where you have more of your single-family homes, some, some townhomes, with the exception of, of this property right here that's owned PD. It's actually, um, a distribution slash slash research laboratory there. So, zooming into the property here, these three properties here, they have two vacant homes and the remnants of a few, a previous landscaping business that's still there. Uh, provided a site plan here, what the site could look like if they were to develop it, if they were to get rezoning. They're looking at possibly doing some kind of a daycare at the top over here, some medical office buildings along, along Pleasant. Um, so you can kind of see where they've got parking in the center. Once again, we aren't approving this, uh, this, uh, site plan, just giving you kind of an idea what it might look like. Zoning for the area here, this area here is RSF forty. On either side of this property here, you see PD zoning. In the PD, uh, to the north, that's where they have that, uh, commercial, uh, research place and, 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 uh, distribution. And then to the south is the neighborhood of single-family homes and townhomes, also in the area here. This is townhomes, but it's, ooh, it's a bug. Um, it's zoned at GC, and that's when you can do townhomes in GC back in the day. Um, and so, looking at the future land use map, this, uh, the area here says neighborhood residential. And as we know, that can be a mixture of housing types and residential uses. However, it does also allow for some kind of a commercial use, um, commercial civic or office space, and that can be a, along major corridors, it can transition between some more of the heavier industrial or, or warehousing over to the, the neighborhoods. Uh, so we are recommending approval for this request. It aligns with future land use map and the Comprehensive Plan. Like I mentioned, this will be a sort of transition between the distribution centers to the north and the neighborhoods to the south. It's compatible with those uses, this provides some sort of a light, uh, office spaces, daycares, medical offices in the nearby neighborhoods. And by putting them all three together, it's coming in, assembling, it can develop a more holistic manor as opposed to being one property next to the other. So, recommending approval. Any questions?
Can we go back to that site plan that's not a site plan yet?
Sure.
So, everything that's shown there currently would fit into OI?
Yes.
With, what they have there, right?
Yes, that's correct.
And things that would not fit into OI is a gas station or a car wash, right?
Correct, correct. OI is a very limited amount of uses, there's no retail. Um, so it's gonna be more, like I said, it's the daycare, it's, it's the schools, it's, you know, it's any kind of, um, medical offices, that sort of thing.
That's all I have.
Anybody have any other questions? I'll make a motion to approve.
Second.
Is there any discussion? Uh, all those in favor? Anyone opposed? No? So, onto the tracking sheet. Anybody have any questions?
Nope.
Nope, is there a motion to adjourn?
Make a motion to adjourn.
Second.
All those in favor? Meeting is adjourned.
Thank you all very much.